So we do have a forum, it's after six, so let's get started.
Probably have to turn your microphones on.
Good idea. Thanks, Mark. All right, welcome, everybody. So now we're going to talk about volunteer recognition programs. I saw the guidance that we got. So do you want to kick it off, Mark, or Nita, do you want to do it first, or what?
Sure, I can kick it off. Yes, Nita did help with what you see in front of you, and "help" is an understatement. So she did a lot of that work. What I did separately was I did reach out to some of our local municipalities to see if or anything that they do. I only got response from two municipalities, so I take it that the other ones that I responded to don't do anything. Dover Township used to do something, and about four or five years ago, they stopped doing any volunteer recognition. So the only municipality locally that I contacted that does anything is Windsor Township. And Windsor Township does a couple of different things, but the thing that they do for their volunteers is they have an annual event. They, it's a catered event, it's a recognition event. They usually hold it at one of the volunteer fire halls that they have in their municipality. And it's for the volunteer and spouse or significant other. And one of the things that they do to recognize the volunteers is they have a gift card program where you start out at $75. It's a $75 gift card. And then, I believe it's every five years, it's 75, 75, and then when you get to five years, it goes up 75. And then, if you're there long enough, it caps, I think they told, she told me, it was $500 or $550. So that's what they do to recognize their volunteers. And they do, their boards and commissions, they do not include their volunteer fire company. But using, they feel using their, the fire hall, they rent the hall, so it's almost like a fundraiser for the fire hall because they're paying for the catering and stuff like that. But they do not include the volunteer fire members in the event.
Do we know if there are any constraints we operate under as far as state laws, in terms of what you cannot do? If you kind of cross a threshold where that's not allowed by law because it's...
I did try to research that, and I couldn't find anything that prohibited it. I guess it's to the eye of the beholder, should we be spending taxpayer dollars for that? And I asked Jennifer Gunnett, their manager, and they have had a few people over the years question it. They don't hide it, it's a line item in their budget, and they, she addresses it when it comes up, and it's never gone past the initial because her response is the amount of time that these folks donate to the township in however many million-dollar budget that they have, an operating budget. I think she said it's around $4,000 a year they expend on this event. That's her definite, that's her defending that is it's a small portion of what these folks actually contribute to the township.
And I know the municipality can implement this, and I know the county did this. There's a tax credit you can give, is that for any volunteer, or is that limited to fire company?
That's limited to first responders, and we just actually had that conversation the other day.
Okay.
That's separate.
Okay.
That's coming to this board.
Yeah, we have a discussion on that coming up.
Yeah, right.
Is that in today's?
No, that was, probably why it's fresh in my mind, it was in James.
Yeah, in James.
He mentioned his report.
Yeah.
So that's the information I have. The other municipalities I reached out to was York Township, Manchester Township, West Manchester Township, Spring Garden Township. Now, one other slipped my mind, and I didn't get responses from them.
So do we know what the stipend maximum allowance is for the boards that we have? I mean, I see on here that there are three that receive something. Parks and Rec doesn't, Historic Preservation doesn't, Township Auditors don't, Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee only has a couple of numbers that aren't already counted in other boards. We talked about Volunteer Fire Company. We also have a vacancy chairman, vacancy board chair. Are there any others that don't show up on this list that are?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not, I'm looking for somebody to tell me, hey, you forgot these folks too.
We forgot Jeff Lobach. So, but he's happy to serve. So what is the guidance for the boards, like zoning hearing board, planning commission? Parks and Rec doesn't have anything, Historic Preservation doesn't receive anything. Is there guidance, is there a limit?
There's definitely guidance on the Board of Supervisors. I don't know if there's guidance in the second-class township code for the other ones. Do you know, Dory, offhand?
I believe that's where it mentions the stipend for planning.
And the Board of Supervisors.
Are we maxed out for the board?
I think those, I think those rates have been that way since 1912.
I mean, quite honestly, when I got my first check was the first time I knew there actually was one.
That's exactly how I was. When John Lucioni talked me into, I thought it was a volunteer position.
Yeah.
I had no idea it was a paid position.
And I think when we were on the planning commission, I think it was 50 bucks that we got.
So they got a raise.
Yeah, so they, yeah. I would just like to know if we're, if we have any leeway there, and if we can do something more. I had a couple of other thoughts here that I put down, let me see. Yalfer Board, there's a citizen at large. And I don't really care for me, but if we're going to entice other people in the future. So I already asked the question about what are the guidelines and limits for volunteer board remuneration, if any? I mean, I'm kind of torn about, I think I brought up at the last meeting that we had some recognition programs at other places that I've worked that are more like cash or card, like Amazon Card or things like that, that they get passed out. It's usually been to employees, but we've also had programs for people who were not employees with the company that got handed out. Is there any possibility of doing recognition for a member of a board or a member of Volunteer Fire Company or something that has stood out above and beyond, recognized by his or her peers for something that has happened that we can give like a Visa card or an Amazon card or something?
Mark, do you want to talk about the card points?
You can.
Our credit card?
Yeah.
So the township has a credit card, township credit cards that have been assigned to some members of the management team, and we acquire points. So every year, we could potentially get gift cards with those points. Yes, we can order them, and we have plenty of points. At the end of the year, when we recognize employees, we have ordered those cards, and it has been zero expense for the township at that point.
Is that something that we can do throughout the year?
Yes, yes, we can.
Catch somebody doing something right?
Yes.
Just, I mean, I don't know. Don, you've been awfully quiet since you brought this topic up. But I do like the idea of having some type of larger volunteer recognition as well, where we all get together and maybe get to see people that we don't normally work with or interact with a lot.
It's very meaningful when everybody can get together and be recognized that way as well. One thing I wanted also to point out is that we can do, we can obtain those gift cards throughout the year, and they can be for local businesses like Home Depot, Lowe's. That way, we can keep the money in the township, if you will.
Just thinking out loud, it might require more effort on our part, but I would assume there's probably businesses around that would donate for volunteers, gift cards to their business.
And Nita did bring that up, her and I had a pretty lengthy discussion. And a lot of what, excuse me, that she brought up was moving forward, developing an actual program. And a lot of those ideas were in that. Today was more or less a brainstorming event for getting started, but her and I talked about moving forward and what we can do, and she definitely brought up about businesses may donate those types of things.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. I think we shouldn't, I think there's also possibilities once we get going of, you know, businesses sponsoring things. I think, big picture, I don't have any problem with anything in the memo or anything in this discussion. The one aspect of this that tends to get me more excited than anything is if we can use this program to encourage community to really, you know, I mean, to, you know, to actually shake hands with people on the zoning hearing board, you know, and see them. I really like the idea of, in this, in the document that you guys prepared of doing something in conjunction with a concert, where people can come and we get to see them, they get to meet other people, and, you know, people whether they're volunteer fire department or volunteer firefighters or whatever they happen to be, you know, get exposed to all the other people with this common purpose. So I think that's, that really has a lot of benefits in the long run.
For clarification, we're talking volunteers, not paid employees, right? These are not employee recognition things, these are volunteer recognition.
Well, yeah, we're talking specifically about volunteers.
Reason I bring it up, from my background, it was always based on longevity, and it was always related to vacations. You can't give vacations to volunteers, that makes no sense.
It's real hard to hear, Bob.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Anyway, I was just saying, where I came from, it was all based on length of service, and you get more and more vacation as you log five-year increments. But that doesn't help with volunteers because they don't care about vacation. But I like the idea of what you said, a volunteer. We attended, or I attended, my wife and I and George, a couple of very nice recognition dinners by the police department. And I would think maybe in the community room, we could utilize that, get our people in here and get the volunteers and the board and everyone together and spend time together, break bread.
I like that idea, but I think, Don, you said something that really struck me. Volunteers don't get much recognition in the community. We can have a dinner, we can bring everybody together, and it's all the people that are already volunteering, looking at each other and congratulating each other. How do we get that to be a broader view of what we do?
I like Don's, I like Don's idea of the concert. What if we brought them up on stage and introduced them to 2,000 people that are sitting out there listening to the concert? And said, these are volunteers, and we can sure use more if there's anyone out there that would be interested. Then they, you have an audience.
If we have an ongoing program, we can recognize them in our newsletter. We can, you know, we can do press releases, you know, maybe you have something that important, it gets press attention even. There's a lot of things that, you know, I think that where Mark and Nita started is a great start, and there's a lot we could do. I really hope this becomes something that is kind of built into our culture in years to come.
At National Night Out, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I can see this expanding in scope to the extent that, I mean, you talked up, you talk about the Yalfer Board members. I think all, you know, all of the Yalfer Commission members, conceivably, all of the Yalfer employees conceivably could be included in something like this. I mean, I think we could even eventually, not, maybe not right away, but expand it to volunteers in our community who maybe don't have any direct effect, direct connection with the township, such as, you know, people who volunteer. I mean, I don't know if we have any soup kitchens in the community, but the one thing that struck me was the pole workers that I saw on Tuesday, sitting there all day long, that we could recognize conceivably. And I'm not talking about giving them money, but, you know, bringing them into our community because those are people who are like already volunteering for something. Maybe that's how we connect. I'm also, I also think about this as an effort for us to find more people for our boards and more volunteers where we need them. And it's kind of an outreach program in my mind, or it could become an outreach program.
That can tie into one of the thoughts that I had had for the future, explaining on our website, which, that's a separate project, a website in itself. That's a project of mine, hopefully for 2024, to have that redone, different vendor anyways. But to tie in, to explain what each of the different boards or commissions do so people can go to the website and have a video or have some sort of language that if you're interested in this type of thing and it happens to be zoning, this is what the zoning hearing board does.
I think the thought I had a couple of minutes ago was, when we have National Night Out, I see booths from other organizations there. What about some of the volunteers? I like the idea of finding other volunteers that we're not recognizing other ways. What about the counselors for the summer parks programs? Like the idea of other groups in the, in the community that volunteer for different things. Be interesting to see how that would play out. There are a lot of organizations with a lot of volunteers. Give Local York is coming up on May 3rd. Bob Pulo is instrumental in pulling that together. And I think over the last couple of years, I think last year, they raised over $4 million in a 24-hour period. Lots that can be done, I think we ought to start at home first and then spread out from there.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
Are there any of the options? I put the options in order of my favor, so just to be clear on that. So option one's the one I like the best, so on, so on. But are there any options that, that we presented here that you don't like or you like more than another?
I like more of the à la carte method. Let's pick some things that'll work, and let's get started right away, and we can add more as we go.
Yeah, I agree. I like option one from the standpoint of, you know, it fits in with our concerts. I think that's the one, it's something that we could do, you know, in June or July or something like that, to kick something off. And we don't necessarily have to do gift cards and all of that stuff, but just to invite, invite them to all get together.
That's what we would do then, and we would rent the pavilion and the community room, and we could have it rain or shine. Or if the board prefers not to have it rain or shine because you want to have that concert element, then we could, we could have a rain or shine situation and have a rain date.
I'd even consider planning to do it twice this season, just to try to get some momentum.
Remember in Saturday in the park, that organization that Charlie Roush was involved with?
Surtema Club?
Surtema?
Yeah. What if we had volunteers in a big tent pavilion like that and had something that, that members of the community would want to come in, and whether it's, you know, raffles or food or something like that, they pay a small amount that goes toward the volunteers? And we have volunteers there, and maybe we have a recognition ceremony. Saturday in the park, I think in the mornings, there used to be something from, from the school district that was recognition.
That was their, that was central school district, and that was their awards, their awards ceremony.
Right. So...
And that actually, that actually went away, but came back this year. Not associated with Spring at Sperry, but they did it this past year. That same thing, and that was, that was a good partnership for us, I think.
Yeah, for the first time, I wasn't available to attend, and I think Charles attended in my place. Yeah, so I'd like this not to be a once and done. I'd like to kind of build it as we go. Things that work well, we continue or increase. Things that don't seem like they're working as well, we drop them off. I don't know that it has to be an option one or an option two, but let's, let's pull the best ideas together and keep it going.
I actually just came from one where the York County History Center had a volunteer recognition tour of the new building prior to it opening officially. So my wife and I went through the new museum, and then they had light orders over at the county courthouse, the replica of the county courthouse, and that was very nice. I'm just sitting here wondering to myself, how many of the camp counselors over the summer actually have never toured our new building, our new facility? Is there a tour that would be attractive to them?
None of them have.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Maybe even board members, you know, Parks and Rec and Historic Preservation, the auditors, I don't know. Opportunity to show off the building and make it a volunteer recognition event.
I do know most of the boards had a tour.
They did, okay.
I can't recall if Parks and Rec did, but I wasn't able to attend all of them, but I do remember giving one to the planning commission and the zoning hearing board.
Good.
Can we find out if we're maxed out with zoning hearing board, receiving $150, planning commission, $150? Is there anything we can do for Parks and Rec?
We can certainly find that out.
I don't know about Township Auditors.
I think they're paid, aren't they?
They are, there's a mechanism for them to be paid if they perform work. Our board is more of a, they meet once a year. The day after the reorganization meeting, and that's...
That's it?
That's it. They would do...
And they don't really do anything.
Right. I didn't want to say it exactly like that.
In a public meeting.
But we have our own auditing firm.
Right.
Some municipalities may not have that, and the Board of Auditors would do that.
Gotcha.
Now, that's, I'll tell anyone my opinion of the auditing board. I mean, it's, it's a remnant of state law that is totally meaningless to us. It's other than the fact that we have to do it. But those board members don't really do anything, I don't think, except for, you know, approve a couple of resolutions or something. Not that we can't recognize them, because we have to have somebody willing to do it. And I guess we have to have a quorum in order to pass the resolutions.
So we have to have at least two of them together in the same room at the same time, huh?
Or via Zoom.
Anything else anybody has for this discussion?
I think that's pretty good.
Yeah, I just think we should, we should include into this, you know, how we promote it, how we get the word out, you know, about, you know, the fact that there are so many volunteers. I think, yeah, because it's the kind of, sort of good news that doesn't get out there very much. So website, whatever else we can do.
Newsletter.
Kind of important.
Yep.
We will make it happen at least one time this year, try to do it for twice.
I think Don said twice.
And I get five votes because I'm not there.
We will keep the board informed as we develop what we're doing.
So I guess I have to open it up to all of the public for comment. There are zero attendees on Zoom. There are a lot of empty seats in the audience. So public comment? This is completed?
Oh, you know, the one thing that, the one thing that I was kind of reminded of, in the past, we've done, we've done like retirement things and a couple of other things where we'd have a little reception in the lobby before a Board of Supervisors meeting. And I think that's, that's a great little mechanism for us, I think, to actually recognize people, you know, volunteers. That is public, but it gets people in the building. It gets them to realize that there is a Board of Supervisors that does business. I don't have specific ideas of when we do that, but I think when we talk about recognizing people, you know, instead of just giving them a plaque or something like that, to bring them into the lobby there as a group, maybe to meet other people, it's a great way to, on a more regular basis, build community without spending a ton of money and doing a whole lot of extra stuff, sort of in addition to the other things.
But you don't know when that would happen, but there are 19 opportunities a year. All right. Anybody have anything else? I think we have some pretty good direction here.
We do.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
Due to this regularly scheduled township Board of Supervisors meeting, our first item will be a pledge to the flag. Please join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and just a star. There have been no executive sessions since our last meeting. We will have a short meeting for legal matter discussion immediately after this meeting tonight. And. Say that again.
So we have had no executive session since our last meeting, but we will have a short one for legal matter discussion immediately after this meeting tonight. And at this point, I would like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. If there's anybody on Zoom who would like to address the board, please click the raise hand button. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, please raise your hand and be recognized. Sir, please. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dennis Lieber. I live at 3611 Trout Run Road. I'd like to bring up two issues to the board. One of them being a question, the other one being an action. Recently, I flagged down one of your road crews and discussed with them the fact that the farm field next to me, the water that we experienced in April basically is running across the road. It's not hitting the drainage ditch. And the reason is, I guess, the material from the field over a period of years has built up to a point where the water flows across the road. It's been about 10, 15 years since you paved that road and I can remember the discussion at the time of the road not, the base being bad. Well, this is the kind of thing that makes the base bad if you don't address it. I haven't heard anything from your Public Works Department, so I thought I'd bring it up to your attention to maybe get some sort of response and or date when they can deal with it. The second thing I'd like to bring up is I, in reviewing your records, I noticed that you entered into some sort of agreement with Glow Fiber. And I'd like to know what areas of the township that Glow Fiber is going to address. Specifically, after we just came through a pandemic, everybody knows the importance of the internet, high-speed internet. And in Trout Run Road and Druck Valley, I think Druck Valley Road is covered, but Trout Run Road is significantly deficient in internet traffic. We have a few options, but none of them are considered high-speed. I'd like to know whether the board is basically pursuing a lot of the money that's flowing around from the federal government and or the state to upgrade, in my opinion, the whole township to high-speed internet.
Glow Fiber does have Trout Run Road on their list to do. That was brought up by me to them. They're basically covering the entire township is their plan. They will not, they do not at this time, because other municipalities were ahead of us, they will not, they don't plan to start Springinsbury construction until the very latter part of 2024, but most likely 2025.
Well, that, that's good news. Very good news.
I don't know their sequence of construction, where, where they're going to start. Logically thinking about it, they may start in the more concentrated areas of the township because of the efficiencies with that, but I'm not aware of their construction schedule yet, but I will at some point in time. I don't think they have that ready yet.
When we know that, can we publish that?
We could.
Just to give people an idea of when they can expect.
Certainly.
And as far as the public works issue, as far as I know, it's been a lot less than 15 years since that, since Trout Run was done.
Yeah.
It was while I was on the board and I don't think it was the first year I was here.
It might be 10, but regardless, we can look at the drainage ditches and get those straightened up.
So we'll get you an answer on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Anybody in attendance on Zoom, please click the raise hand button? All right, seeing none. We will move on to our engineering reports. Environmental, Diana?
Good evening. I have no updates to the report submitted last week. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Civil Engineering, John?
I don't have any additional updates to my report. I'll open it up to any questions if the board has on the report that I submitted.
I don't think I had anything. Anybody else? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next, we have our consent agenda items A through F. Are there any items on this list that anyone would like to have removed for additional discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Okay, so I would like to remove F from that for discussion, or we can have that before we take the vote.
I'll amend the motion to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So I just, I just wanted to go through this briefly. Mark, we've had this discussion in the past and we probably can't do, well, I know we can't do anything about the situation we're in right now. I just have a question. So as we do further projects, we come up with a dollar amount, they do a certain amount of units that they've calculated for reduction of, of the pollutants or, or sediment or whatever. All of a sudden, somebody changes the formula and we owe them a half a million dollars more for the same work. It seems like the upfront negotiation has to be different.
I would agree with that. I wasn't part of that.
I know.
I, I understand what you're saying, but we are getting additional pounds.
We're getting benefit from it, but we're also the one paying the bill.
Right.
If, if I pay a contractor to work on my house and my house goes up in value more than we thought it would from the work that he did, I don't owe him more money.
Yep. 100%.
So the other question I have is the, the money that the consortium paid us for the work that we did, did that go up because of that amount?
No, that amount was agreed upon before construction started.
They fixed their price, which was smart.
We didn't fix ours.
Are we gonna, and I think you had said that we might go, be able to go back to them and ask for more because we got a greater reduction, which benefits all of the communities in the consortium?
Correct. Not might, I am going back to request additional funding. The amount of available funds left that aren't already earmarked for other projects is less than that or right around.
Less than that amount.
So whether, whether I'm successful getting any additional or not, or what that additional is in value, I'm not sure. But the request is definitely going to happen.
Okay.
Mark, do you know if there's any carryover for the excess poundage that we got rid of in the next round that?
Absolutely. So what we went over in our, in this permit, this, that re-allocation gave us additional pounds, the 700 some thousand pounds. That's in excess of our current permit requirement. So the additional will be credited to our next project.
Next project. So we will get some credit for the money.
Yeah, there's less that we have to do next time, so it will save us money on that project.
Correct.
Yep.
So it's not all bad, but.
No, but it was a surprise.
Yeah.
It definitely was a surprise. It, it was, it was good to hear that we got additional DEP credits, but.
But not that we had to pay for them.
It's one thing if that would have been $5,000 extra, but 563,000 is a.
Yeah, and.
A lot of them. But it's, it's accurate, but it's a surprise.
Right. All right. I just wanted to bring that up before we just went ahead and, and approved the final invoice, which we have to do. We're contractually obligated to pay that money. It will benefit us in the long term, but it's a cost that we should probably find a way to avoid in the future.
Understood.
I'll move to approve consent agenda item F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements. So we have, let's see, this is authorization to upgrade UV lamp racks. So do we have a?
Mr. Chairman, this.
Did I say? I said, I think I had the wrong title, didn't I? Bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements, authorization to upgrade UV lamp racks through ENA QUA and Aqua?
Yep.
In an amount not to exceed $228,800 as a sole source provider, and I believe that's because they have the current system in there and they're, they're the only ones that can do the upgrade.
Correct. This is our UV disinfection system at the wastewater treatment plant. And the current electronics have reached their useful life. And this is budgeted shared sewer expense. Denny Crable is here for any questions.
It's budgeted, we need it?
We definitely need it, and it is budgeted.
So I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for authorization to upgrade the UV lamp racks through Inaqua in an amount not to exceed $228,800.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have subdivisions and land development, Monarch Development Group LLC, discussion on proposed multifamily development for a portion of York Galleria Mall property. Good evening.
We, we do have representation here, obviously. For tonight, the Board of Supervisors have heard about this project in the past in 2023. We did send this memorandum to the Planning Commission and there was a presentation made to the Planning Commission and they did provide some comments and commentary, if you will, to the potential developer here about what they have in mind. And they're obviously back here to the board this evening to provide a little bit more, I think, substance from what they initially provided before with this memorandum and provide a little bit additional detail. With that said, I'll turn it over to the representative.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alex Otto. I'm with the law firm of Barley Snyder and I'm here tonight with Brandon Johnson from Monarch Development Group. I know Tom Nahle has been doing a lot of these presentations in the past, but he had another engagement tonight, so I'm here in his place. So we're here to discuss the possibility of using the flexible development overlay for Monarch's project. Monarch has an equitable interest to purchase an approximately two and a half acre piece of property, which is part of a larger seven and a half acre piece of property that's located in the York Galleria Mall area, and Monarch would like to construct a multifamily apartment building on that two and a half acre piece of property. As they've said, we've previously discussed this idea with township staff, the Board of Supervisors last fall. And as part of those discussions, we were told that the township's working to update its comprehensive plan and it was recommended to us to reach out to the person helping with that comprehensive plan update, Marion Hall of CDM Smith. So we reached out to Marion, we presented our project to her, discussed it with her, and she actually recommended that we look into using the flexible development overlay for our project. She thought it would be a good fit and it would work well. So we reviewed the ordinance, looked at the flexible development overlay and agreed with her. The flexible development overlay seems like it would be a good fit for the project. The flexible development overlay requires at least two and a half acres or more of land to be used and it specifies certain base zoning districts that can be used, one of which is the commercial highway district. The piece of property we're talking about would be two and a half acres, so we would meet the acreage requirements and it's zone commercial highway, so we would meet the base zoning requirements. Additionally, the flexible development overlay part of the ordinance lists several criteria, one of which has to be met to apply the overlay district to the property. And the criteria we think we could meet is any structure or site vacant for over a calendar year. Now, as I said, this property, it's two and a half acres, it's located in part of the York Galleria Mall. It's currently a vacant parking lot. As we all know, malls aren't that popular anymore. Everyone's using Amazon, online shopping. So this area hasn't really been used for parking. It's sort of neighbored by a self-storage facility. That facility doesn't have a heavy parking demand. People don't really seem to be parking in this two and a half acre area from that facility. So it's underused, it's not being used. And one of the main purposes of the flexible development overlay district is to make use of underutilized land in the township. And this is an example of that type of land. So we think it would work well for this multifamily apartment complex. Additionally, multifamily dwellings are permitted by the flexible development overlay district, so it would be a permitted use. We wouldn't be concerned with the use. And a lot of the other criteria, we think we would be able to meet with the project, the area and bulk requirements, setback requirements, lighting, landscaping. We've looked at all those things and preliminarily, we think the project will be able to comply there with those requirements. But there are two requirements of the flexible development overlay section of the ordinance that we're unsure about, we're unsure how they would be applied to the project. So that's more why we're here tonight is to see maybe how those would be interpreted, determine how we could move forward considering those sections of the ordinance. One of those sections is 32591C2, which is the coverage requirement of the flexible development overlay. It says the maximum coverage is 50%. It does not specify lot coverage, building coverage, doesn't specify which one. If it's referring to building coverage, we would likely be able to meet that requirement. The building we're proposing wouldn't cover more than 50% of the two and a half acre lot. We're talking about lot coverage. If we're talking about lot coverage, that might present more of an issue. What we're proposing would cover the lot, there would be parking, landscaping, a building. But that being said, we would be reducing the amount of impervious coverage with our project as currently it's covered in asphalt, it's a parking lot. So we would be proposing to put a building, landscaping, so the coverage would be reduced. But if we're talking lot coverage, it would be greater than 50%. So we would want to get sort of your thoughts on that, interpretation on that. And then the other section that we would like to get some more information about, see how it would apply to our project, is section 32591E2, which relates to building height. So that section for the flexible development overlay indicates the maximum building height for non-residential uses or base zones is 100 feet, and the maximum building height for residential uses or base zones is 45 feet. Our project is a little bit unique in that the use, it's multifamily, it's residential. But the base zoning district is commercial highway, it's not residential. So we're not quite sure which one of those would apply to it. We would hope it'd be the 100-foot one. If it was the 45-foot one, we may still be able to comply, but we prefer the larger, taller building requirement if possible. So those are our sort of questions about the ordinance. And overall, as you probably know, the flexible development overlay, it's subject to planning commission and your ultimate approval, and you get to decide if it can be applied to the property. So before we move forward with formal plans, going through that process, formal submissions, we wanted to come get your initial thoughts and see how we should proceed, if we can proceed, those type of things.
Have you reached out to the mall management group?
We have, we're working with them.
Any light you can shed on on how those conversations are going?
Sure, absolutely. Hi, I'm Brandon Johnson with Monarch Development Group. By the way, here with our our development partner will be Vanguard Development. Mark Horst is here with us tonight. You guys should know him, he's done other deals in the in the township, great projects. Yes, we've reached out to the mall, that was part of the time since we talked to some of you back in September. We've been working through, as you might imagine, there's a there's a pretty big complicated agreement about the mall called the operating agreement of how, you know, the mall was identified to be back in like, I think, the 80s or something. So we had to weave together an amendment that allowed for this use, which was never never contemplated. We never envisioned this would be how malls would would be going, right? CBL, the mall, the mall's divided into two main big, you know, parcels. CBL owns most of the mall, and then WMG, WMD, WMG owns the section that we have under agreement, which is now used for the self self-storage facility. So yes, we've had great conversations with them, they love the idea of having the apartments right there. There's a lot of mutual benefits, you know, to having people, you know, feeding the mall, all of that. And yeah, we've got an agreement, we're very, very close to a final draft. We've been going through a lot of versions, but of that amendment that will officially kind of confirm that this use is approved by CBL and everybody in the mall. So the most units that we could develop, that we would be developing here would be 100. We're looking at somewhere between 75 and 100 in a four-story building. Surface parking would be the plan, we're not planning to do any type of podium park or anything. We developed a property, completed construction about a couple of years ago. I think I mentioned this before, but it's called Signature Flats at Hershey. So if you know, you wanted to look that up, it's a luxury rental apartment building. That's kind of a template for kind of how we would carry over to this on that. That was built by Vanguard, actually, so this time they're our development partner and design build contractor here, too. So yeah, that was a long-winded answer to your question.
That one in Hershey, is that the one right below the state police?
It's right by Tanger Outlets, it's across the street from the Starbucks, and the Hershey Museum is right next door, so, yep. Yeah, just another add to add on, the storage, the self-storage facility, they have in their, they have a seven acre, seven and a half acre parcel, we would be subdividing off a two and a half acre parcel. That their seven and a half acres has, I don't know, hundreds of parking spaces, I've never counted them, but the ordinance really only requires what that use is to have like 24 spaces or something. So they have way more parking than they need. That section of parking lot was empty, it was even empty on Black Friday, which of all days would be the day, right? And although we want that higher limit, just to be clear, we'd only need a four-story building. It just economies, it makes sense to stop there, you know, wood-framed construction. So with the sloped roof, you're looking at like 58 feet to the peak of the roof. So.
So you're not going to build it any more than four stories?
No, we wouldn't have any reason to do that. And she mentioned that you need two and a half acres to use the flexible development overlay, and just wanted to fact-check, it's actually it's actually two acres or more, and we happened to have two and a two and a half. So that's why Marion thought this is a this is a great fit. I know that her work on the comprehensive plan since then is is still very much supporting this kind of use reuse of the mall. So we just think it's a great, you know, smart growth concept to put your multifamily housing where you've got density already, you've got infrastructure for utilities, you know. Yeah. That's that's pretty much it. The use of the overlay, sorry, requires planning commission review and then Board of Supervisor approval. So we went to the planning commission last month, and now we're here. Did I miss anything?
Okay. John, I put you on the spot. You knew this was coming.
I did.
Your interpretation of coverage, what does 32591 dot C dot two mean to us?
It, the coverage is impervious area. And one of the reasons why I believe the mall may be non-conforming is at one time the mall wasn't an entire single parcel. And they they, I think they allowed at that time up to 80% coverage when the mall came together. And then after the mall was, I think the original builder was from Johnstown.
George Zomias.
Thank you. Zomias, and he owned a number of malls. And then I think after it went through the approval process and got, and correct me, Bob probably knows the record of this development, but at that point, the Bonton created their own parcel. Some of the other parcels, Boskov, I think, created his own parcels, and it sort of got piecemealed. But the answer to the question is, we we, coverage includes paved area. And so if they have 100% blacktop today, that would be non-conforming. But on a scrape and rebuild, which I assume this would be, they would need to make that a conforming, a conforming parcel as they went through the land development process.
So I think according to our engineer, that's not what you were hoping to hear.
It's not, but that would mean, you know, a variance might be a way to address that, request a variance from the coverage requirement. That's something we've considered and thought about, so we're not too surprised to hear that, but appreciate the feedback.
Building height. So we just addressed this recently in another district. And there were some provisions for setback and height, and I don't remember all the numbers. Do you, James? I'm putting you on the spot, John.
John?
And Randall was there, I'm going to point to him because he worked, go ahead.
If you're. Correct, Mount Zion Commons, I believe I believe it's 100 feet for that for that project, as an example. That's what they have requested, because initially it was 45 or 55, and they were looking to have heights increased.
I thought it was something that could be increased to 100 feet with greater setback. It isn't just 100 feet, it's.
I I think you are correct, Mr. Smalley.
There's a ramp up.
I I believe that is correct.
If you're right on or close to the the setback limit, it's, I I think we might have increased that to 55 feet.
And that may be true as well. I don't have it in front of me.
Every certain number of feet back from that, you could increase a certain number of feet in height.
You are.
To a maximum of 100 feet.
That is correct, I I just don't know the numbers.
I don't remember exactly what the what the schedule is for how that ramps up.
The max is 100.
Yeah. So there's a potential there that, I mean, with this being commercial highway, and I think we were talking about a mixed-use district.
Correct, it was a mixed-use district.
This shouldn't be more burdensome to meet than a than a lesser or a stricter zoning area, one would imagine. Just.
You may not have it in that, John.
I think I might have it, I I think it reads. I think it reads, if you increase, if you increase the height for every foot in excess of the required setback, you go another foot in vertical height. I believe that's the section.
What's the what's the base on maximum height?
The the, in this publication, and I I thought it was 45 feet. But like the the front yard in this publication is 20, side 10, rear 20. And as you move back from that, you could increase in height by a foot.
I thought we changed that for mixed use.
Okay.
Specifically in the in the Mount Zion Commons project, but applying to any other mixed-use area.
That would be correct, because it was it was township-wide.
It was township-wide, it was for mixed use, which is a stricter zoning requirement than commercial highway.
And I was quoting flexible development. That's what I was quoting, okay.
Okay, yeah, you were you're taking a look at what they're specifically looking at currently.
Currently, what it's what it's.
And what I'm trying to do is equate what we were, what we just did for mixed use township-wide versus what commercial highway, the the base zoning would be.
Are you asking for the mixed use?
What the new one is that we passed.
I'm getting there.
Was that in 2022?
That our code of ordinances.
That you would have passed that?
It says.
Late 2022 or 20, early 2023.
Building shall be erected to, this is the mixed-use zone.
The new one?
The new one.
Okay.
No building shall be erected to a height in excess of 55 feet, the following exceptions apply. Height may be increased by one foot for each an additional foot of width to each side yard, up to a maximum of 100 feet. So every foot that you go above 55 feet, you have to increase your side yard distance by a foot.
So not saying that we're there yet, but I think that might give you some understanding of what the board had been thinking on recent projects in possibly a stricter zone than than commercial highway.
Okay, so you would be potentially thinking about incorporating that concept into the flexible development overlay? Is that?
I I am one of five. So I've been talking a lot, I'd like to hear from my fellow board members.
Well, I will give you my opinion, I think it's a wonderful use for the vacant parking lot, and I would love to see it go forward. Looks like all you have to do is play with the side yard, and you can get your 58 feet for a peaked roof.
Yeah, that would only be three more feet, right?
Exactly, and having spoken to, I think, as I said, the representative from CBL myself, they're not in a position today, cash-wise, to be building any residential there themselves. So this is, I'm sure, why they're cooperating with these guys to to build a an apartment building there. I had one question, though, we had talked when we met earlier in September about whether these were going to be luxury apartments like Hershey or Market Rate or senior living, or did you guys make a decision yet, or?
Yeah, we would call them luxury rental.
Luxury.
In Hershey, our one bedrooms rent for about 1,500, and our two bedrooms rent for about 1,900.
Okay.
And, you know, market information seems to indicate we'd we'd have to see similar rents here, you know, close to that. And I did want to follow up, you helped remind me on one of the comments the planning commission made, they'd asked us about seniors and about children, so just demographic information that we have. At our Hershey building, 75 units, we have two children. We have a similar mix of what we propose here, you know, a half one bedrooms, half two bedrooms. We'd look at similar bed, uh, unit sizes and a similar mix. Like I said, we might be anywhere between 75 and 100 units. I think we'd probably land most at like 90s, you know, somewhere in there. But so at 75 units, we have two children, and we have 96 residents, which is like 1.3 per unit. And we have 13 residents who are 55 and older. So, yeah, so just kind of give you some kind of general demographics. I think we didn't, we'd see kind of a similar profile here, you know, so, yeah.
George, Don.
I don't know that I would add anything. I would just. I'm sort of confused. What we're, I'm I'm just confused what we're doing, if anything, here tonight. Are we just talking, are we going to decide, is it?
There's nothing to vote on tonight, Don.
We're just talking.
We're just talking.
Okay. Well, I think this is a good idea, then. And somebody has to figure, somebody needs to figure out how to get it past the talking stage into the acting acting stage.
There you go.
George.
I don't know that I could add anything to the three comments, other than to say, I agree.
Did you get enough from us tonight?
I did, I did, and you might, you know, we'll probably be back, consider text amendment potentially to the flexible overlay district to potentially incorporate a structure similar to what's been done in mixed use.
Yeah, I would add too, just the the ordinance says that you can use the flexible development overlay subject to planning commission review, Board of Supervisors approval. So, you know, to whatever extent, how formal that approval needs to be, you know, that's why we're here.
Well, well, tonight, I mean, we won't get the approval.
Right, right.
Tonight, we're just getting their thoughts, and then we do have to go back through the whole process again, but yes.
Talking, but Don wants to hear the action plan.
I'd be satisfied if the talking just stopped.
Well, on that note, yes, thank you, thanks for hearing us out, thanks for the feedback, we appreciate it, and you will definitely be hearing from us again, so.
Excellent.
Thanks.
You bet.
May I ask, may I ask a quick question, just for my own kind of clarification for purposes of of maybe having a text amendment in, knowing that we're jumping into that very shortly with our consultant? I'm just trying to get a sense of where the board may be at in that regard, knowing that the overhaul of our zoning ordinance is not so far from happening. So the question becomes, from my standpoint, and when I talk to other folks, is is the board willing to entertain amendments while that process is going to get started and ongoing? Sometimes that can be a little controversial in some respects, depending on how you. Sometimes that can be a little controversial in some respects, depending on how you view that, uh, to, to where you ultimately incorporate that into what you're doing with the amendment to the ordinance, or would you want the developer to wait till the ordinance is ready to be adopted um with a significant amendment?
I have an opinion on that.
Let's, let's not share your opinion.
That's why we have a solicitor.
Yes.
So I, I'll answer your question, Randall. The, the train moves down the tracks and, and it doesn't stop, for lack of a better term. So if a text amendment is proposed and no modification has been put forth for a general overhaul of the ordinances, the board has an obligation to review and assess the text amendment, regardless of what their opinions are on it. That's per.
Okay.
How the board operates.
I just wanted.
So you, you stole my story, but that was essentially the uh.
I didn't mean to steal your story, but, but, you know, lesser minds try to emulate greater minds. How's that sound?
I just wanted to be.
So I'm gonna emulate.
No, it was me talking, emulating you.
I just wanted to be clear because those kind of questions do arise.
I, I agree.
On, I don't want to say a daily basis, but those things do arise and I've heard different legal opinions over time in that regard. Sometimes they, they want to put the kibosh on those things until they're further down the road, if you will, but I, I understand your position as the legal counsel.
I would advocate that you deal with what's presented in front of you, whatever is presented in front of you.
That's all I need to know, so I.
Dig up streets that have just been paved, because if you waited for everything to be done and perfect and paved one time, you would never get anything done.
Correct. We're on the same page.
That's my story in a nutshell.
I like it.
It's great. Great. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, anything for communication from supervisors? I would normally add Charles on to the end of that, but.
I actually have a couple of things, if I can remember them. One is the, the street right below us, our yard backs up to the, let's see, the back lot, property line of our yard is the end of Springersbury Township. Windsor Township is right below us. Well, Glow Fiber came in and did the street below us uh in the past two weeks and they did a terrific job, as far as I could see. They cut out a two-foot by two-foot section of lawn, about six inches deep, laid it aside, dug a four-foot hole, dragged their uh fiber through, put the property back, put straw on top of it and you can't even tell they were there. So they did a nice job, but I had several of my uh neighbors ask me whether we had done anything with Glow Fiber or not and whether they were coming to Springersbury. My answer was, I couldn't recall, so I called Mark and he reminded me it's, it wasn't Glow Fiber at the time, it was Shentel, which is Shenandoah Telecommunications, which owns Glow Fiber. So it, it is the same and yes, they will be coming, so I answered that for them. The other one is just this uh event I told you, we went and saw the new museum uh for York County Hair, uh History Center. And one of the things that they did, they have a picture that is a Lewis Miller picture of York back in the seventeen hundreds and they sent it to a company that animated it so that people walk in the streets and smoke comes out of chimneys and cool stuff like that. But the neat part of it was, they added camp security to the picture that wasn't there before. So now if you go into the museum, you'll see how York Center related to camp security on the East End.
Interesting.
I think that's all I had.
Don?
Yep.
George?
Yep.
James, Solicitor's Report.
I have nothing further to add, other than what's in my report.
Any questions for the Solicitor? Managers' Report, Mark?
The only thing I wanted to add to my written report was the board's aware that we partnered with York County Libraries to do the story walk in our park. And if you haven't noticed, it has been installed, the story has, the stories there. We are doing a ribbon-cutting event in conjunction with the library on May eighth at one P M. If the board's interested in attending, you're more than welcome. That is all.
Dory, can you send us a reminder? Thank you.
All right, let's see. Um, ordinances and resolutions. We have um resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five, public facilities policy for conference room A one zero six.
Mr. Chairman, this is the room in the hallway across from the public restrooms. That room is now set up with a card access and is capable of being offered for rent for anyone that would want to use that in lieu of the community room itself. So that's what resolution thirty-five is about and the resolution thirty-six is amending the fee schedule for the rental of that room.
Appreciate the work that you did to make that available. It's a, a great use because it's in the section that is gated off so that it can be accessed by the public with restrooms after hours without access to the rest of the building.
Yes.
I'll move for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-five and twenty twenty-four thirty-six.
I have a motion and a second. I have one question. On the fee schedule, there was another line item that had read on it.
That is for testing at the wastewater treatment plant. Testing that we're charging for.
And is that a change?
It is. It's a new test.
All right, just wanted to make sure that wasn't a mistake in the.
It's not. PFAS, PFAS is the actual test.
Yeah, it's like four hundred and sixty-five bucks or something.
Right.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, we have some uh, some items that are listed under old business. Um, should we change that to unfinished business? Technically.
If, if you like to follow Roberts' Rules of Order.
Yeah.
And, I mean, you can call it whatever you would like, Mr. Chair, but um, old business would be recognized by uh, um, pretty much every other meeting agenda planner out there. Unfinished business may imply that uh you would finish it at some point in time. Uh, old business just means it's sitting there.
The reason, okay, fair enough. The reason I was asking that is because we probably have some business here that we have actually finished unless something else changes, like traffic calming. We have solutions in place for that.
We do.
Um.
We can remove it.
I would suggest that we remove the things that we do not need to discuss. Sidewalks, um, in the um, in some of the planning coming up, we were talking about where throughout the community, we need to reconnect um existing sidewalks, fix sidewalks that are messed up and add sidewalks where there are a six-month note and things like that.
Coming up with a master plan, so to speak.
So you're, you're already working on that with probably the strategic plan. I would suggest that we don't need necessarily a separate item on here for that. We could probably finish that business. Um, volunteer recognition program. We had um a public meeting earlier this evening to discuss that and we have some things to move forward. I don't know that we actually have open old business that we have to discuss so much as ideas for uh, for the township to move forward along those lines. Uh, we've been carrying a lot of baggage from month to month and I'm just.
Tear that off.
I'm recommending that we clean things up that uh, that we don't need to um, to carry further. Um, I think there's still some work to do with the volunteer fire company bylaws, if we were going to change something there about uh auditing records, finances. But um, YALFAR Governance, if we're not really planning on doing anything specifically with that, and I think that the discussions we've had, um, we don't really have a plan to move forward with um, with any specific thoughts or changes there at this point. Would it be better to bring that up under new business when we have an appropriate reason to do that? So those, those are my thoughts. We're just, we're carrying a lot of things month to month that we don't really intend to do anything with, so.
I, I don't know, from my perspective, to remove the governance issue almost makes it sound like we've satisfactorily resolved it and we really haven't. It's not even been addressed and I think there are probably some ideas out there that have been floated around among individuals that there just needs to be a mechanism and maybe by keeping it on the agenda, at least we have the flexibility to discuss it at this meeting, which we wouldn't have if we took it off the agenda.
I pretty much agree with George. I'd like to see us eliminate B, C, and F, since we've dealt with those, and just leave A, D, and E on, on there for future discussion, if there ever is a need for it.
Is that a motion?
Can we?
Don?
Second.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I think that takes us to the end of our agenda this evening. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.